Good morning, good morning, good morning. Check one, two. Good morning. Closer, huh? Yeah, to this clip down. Yeah, because I like it closer, too. Yeah, it's taken down. Well, I didn't, I didn't want to mess with it. I thought you guys had. Morning, 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 morning. Morning, morning. Good morning. All right. Good morning, everybody. Today is Tuesday, August 25th, 2023. The time is 9:00 AM. We're here for regular meeting. Kings County Board of Supervisors, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboen.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Roberto Pauli.
Thank you.
No, no cheaters.
All five board members are present, and we're going to get going here. Next up is the invocation is Pastor John Smith, Jr. here. Okay, if not, then Mr. Nate here, we do us the honor, sir, with the invite.
Thanks, sir.
Please join us in the invocation. And then the pledge of allegiance, brother.
Here.
Thanks, sir.
Hey, good morning. Let us pray. Dear God, thank you for this day, and thank you for this board of supervisors, Lord, in our county. We pray that your hand would be upon this meeting. You would bless those in attendance and those that are online, Lord. You're grateful for your wisdom, Lord, and your guidance. Most of all, Lord, we are grateful for your son, Jesus, and grateful for this country. And these things we pray. Amen.
Thanks, sir.
Please join me as we salute our great American flag. Ready? Begin.
Thanks, sir. All right, welcome to the new temporary chambers. I think it's appropriate to thank everyone who's been working so hard all week. Of course, we want to thank clerks Catherine, Diane, IT, everyone who was here handling this and moving chairs and tables. We know that's a lot of hard work, so thank you to everybody who's been a part of that. Appreciate you. We'll go on to unscheduled appearances. We first may address the board at this time. Madam Clerk, do you have any speaker cards? We'll go with those first.
I do. I have one from Zach Bomba. Do I suggest that's incorrect?
Morning, sir.
Introduce myself really quickly. I'm Zach Bomba, and I am a congressional being in Golden Age or Congressman Valadeo. I just wanted to say if you have any events or topics that our office can help out with, I'd love for you to reach out. Additionally, I might, I might actually approach, approach you at the end to, if I think that there's another topic that we can accomplish on. That's it.
Welcome. What's a grain and go date? I never heard that before.
It, it's just, I was in the military before, and so I'm, I'm here to, to help out with law enforcement, fire department, military affairs.
All right. What branch you serve?
Air Force.
All right, welcome. Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
And this time, is there anybody else, even if you had to fill out a speaker card? Are you welcome at this time?
I actually have another speaker card. Mike Ornellis.
Hey, good morning, sir. Good morning, everyone. Thank you. So don't have the prepared remarks that I'm used to having that little last minute notification or other person or kind of family. We wanted to, Michael Nellis, Kings County Firefighters Association, wanted to come today to echo the comments made a couple of weeks ago about our recent firefighter recruitment process. Rewinding five years when we first got professional firefighters and not volunteer firefighters in our department, we, we hired a group of them to be able to put two on every day. During that time, we had 300 applicants, 300 applicants with experience and training. Recently, we weren't able to even get enough applicants to show up for the positions we had available. But the problem is, according to the younger guys in our industry, it's the compensation. And I know it comes across sounding green, but the reality is, is we're about 35% in pay behind our comparable departments. We're the lowest paid department in the region. And the problem with having firefighters who are, when you don't get the best applicants, it's not that paperwork doesn't get done on time. Like, there's real consequences that can come from this. You know, people's, people's property, people could lose their lives, people could suffer, sorry, lifelong disabilities from us not being able to do our jobs effectively and quickly. On top of the recruitment issues, we have retention issues. We have some of the best firefighters leaving to work other departments. There's recruitments going on right now for great departments in the valley. They wouldn't have to leave their house to be, to now to go work there. And they're going to be making some new people more money. And the brain drain that we produce from experienced training, knowledge of our department is huge. We don't have a lot of people on duty every day to be able to pull through. It's me and the partner on an engine, maybe two other guys, she went up another engine, and we're going to need you guys, your help, the board's help to increase the funding, cheap lynch, and to help us retain our good firefighters we have now, bring them up for these better firefighters, equip them. We have fired yesterday, we had like two engines break. Day before, we had another engine that's too great. We have, Chief's going to ask you guys to recruit some fire hose. We need it. Please prove it. Like, we need you help. So that's what I'm here today to say. Please help us. I'm sorry I didn't prepare remarks for you. I'll try to do better this time.
No worries, no worries. You did good. Keep following the conversations aboard who's been having on retention. Okay, so eight weeks in a row. All right, thank you. Anybody else?
That's all the speaker cards that I have, and I've no written correspondence to those in the parody on online. Have their hand raised.
Okay, last call. All right, we'll go down to approval of the minutes. Item A, report out of closed sessions for regular meeting for August 8th, 2023. Counsel.
There's nothing to report.
Thank you. Item B, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting for August 8th, 2023. Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved, Verboen.
Second. Most by Verboen, second by Fagundes. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Item passes five in favor. Thank you. We got a large consent calendar this morning, but if there are no questions or comments from the board, the chair will entertain a motion. Motion by Robinson.
Nev, second.
Second by Nev. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 5-0. That takes us to regular agenda items. We have two today. Person comes from Public Works. Who would be presenting our? Mr. Cabrera. Morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mitchell Cabrera, chief engineer with the Public Works Department, here before your board this morning with a request to cancel and postpone the bids for the 16th Avenue at Tulare Lake Canal Bridge Replacements Project. If you recall, on June of this year, we came before your board requesting the approval of the plans and specifications, as well as authorization to advertise a project for construction. We had the bids out, and we had a lot of input from contractors asking us to delay the project. There are currently high flows in that canal, the proximity to the flood as well. The way the plans were designed originally were, was when the channel was dry for ease of construction and cost. Now that we've had the flood and we've had rains, we've had flows going in there, we won't be able to construct in a feasible manner of the bridge. So the request is to cancel the bids now, postpone them till next year, and at the earliest chance, or the first window we have of, you know, the channel being dry, that can be, we would then readvertise the project and go to construction. We have been in contact with the companies running water and using the canal for irrigation, and their input was September through December 1st of 2024 would be the earliest window where they are expecting no flows. So we would come before your board before that window, request to advertise, and hopefully be able to go to construction during that time. So at this time, the request is to cancel the current bids and postpone for next year.
Any questions or comment?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Most by Fagundes, second by Nev. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
That takes to administrations. Martin, good morning, Don.
Good morning.
The chairman, members of the board, the board.
So this morning, I'm requesting that your board approve the agreement for the collection of impact fees by the city of Avonale. Ordinance number 633 pertaining to developmental impact fees was introduced immediately following a public hearing on June 14, 2021. This ordinance allows the county to collect fees for the facilities of countywide public protection, fire, library, animal control, and shares program investigation. So the fees are collected at the time building permits, community constructions are issued, and they are deposited into various county public facilities fees accounts. So at that time, the county entered into three agreements with the city of Corcoran, Leamore, and Hanford for collection of the fees. However, the city of Avonale was not part of the agreement with the cities. So after discussion with the city manager of Avonale, the county is proposing to enter into a collection agreement with the city. The proposed agreement for the collection of the public facility fees between the city of Avonale and the county was approved by the city council of Avonale at their regular meetings on June 22nd, 2023. So the board is requested to execute the agreement, allowing staff of the city to proceed with fee collection activities at the time building permits are issued. So the funds will be collected according to the rates that were reestablished by the board on January 5th, 2016, together with subsequent raises since that time. The collection of the county's fees by the city of Avonale, as well as the other cities in the county, is very important to the overall plan use of decent revenues for facility construction in the future. So this concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer them, and again, I respect the request that you, the board, approve the agreement for the collection of impact fees by the city of Avonale. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thanks for the presentation. Any questions or comments from the board?
A move was presented. Thank you.
Second.
Fagundes.
Motion by Verboen, second by Fagundes. Madam Clerk.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if you could entertain, Mary Ann Bradfield from SBA was requesting to speak under end schedule. Has some, she's getting here this morning. Could we open for her to be able to make her comments?
Is the board okay with that?
Yeah.
Counsel? Okay, well, is she online or?
She's actually right here in the office.
Oh, okay. Hey, good morning.
I drove over from Bakersfield and took a wrong turn. So thank you very much for accommodating me. I am Mary Ann Bradfield. I'm the Public Information Officer for the SBA's Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. I think you all received an email from me yesterday with a great deal of information. But I did want to address you this morning and tell you that we are from the federal government. We're the smallest cabinet-level agency, and we are tasked with long-term disaster recovery and resilience. So we're here to help your communities build back more resiliently, and not just from this disaster, but be prepared for any future ones. Let me tell you how we do that. SBA has specialized program for rural counties called a Rural Disaster Declaration, and we've been able to do that for you here in Kings County. What does that do? That gives homeowners, renters, businesses of all sizes that have been adversely affected through physical losses, private nonprofits and small agricultural co-ops, assistance through very affordable low interest rate loans to rebuild from the physical damage, but also from economic injury for small businesses, small ag co-ops, and private nonprofits. Now, what does that mean? They don't have to have physical damage. So let's say the gas station that's at the corner there, the highway, because of the floods, there wasn't traffic. So they lost revenue because of the floods. They can still apply for economic injury disaster loans to help with those operational costs they would have already been able to cover if, if that had not happened. So in this particular instance, you have now the physical. This is new for, for this county. You have the ability to physically rebuild as well as the economic injury, which you did have some access to before. But this is a little different. Because of the date we, we declared this, now, and you're one of the first to receive this, up to $500,000 for rebuilding a home. Up to $100,000 to repair, replace personal property for renters or homeowners. And up to $2 million for businesses, and that includes both the economic injury and the physical losses, say the business is staying. Now, unfortunately, we cannot help the ag producers because USDA does that. But if you are a support organization or business, we can assist you. If your home is on the agricultural lands, we can still look at that home loan, including the road that goes up to your home. And maybe the best thing is that for the first 12 months, there are no payments and no interest. Our job is to help both the homeowners and the businesses stay afloat, get to the other side. And then in terms of long-term resiliency, up to 20% of your verified loss, if you had physical losses, can, if you're approved for the loan, it's possible that we can add that to the loan so that you can build back, be more resilient, not just of floods, wildfires, or any other disaster that may come. And again, that's new. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take up your time. I want to answer your questions. I think I went over everything.
Yeah, super.
So if you have anticipated a flood, and you've paid to want to come for the levy around your property, but never flooded, would you be able to, able to, to refund it for that work?
I'm going to say it's doubtful. However, I have a motto. When in doubt, go ahead and apply, and they'll tell you. Because if you did it just for this flood, I have no idea how the new regulations might apply to that for mitigation, mitigating future disasters. Now, had it flooded, and then they needed that burn to avoid it in the future, that would be mitigation. But my other piece of advice is, once you get a loan officer or a case manager, make that person your best friend. They're the ones who know your, each individual situation. I should not ever see your person. They can assess it and help you find the, oh, sorry. They can assess it and help that individual find the best options for them. And if they call you, or if they ask for information, get it back to them as quickly as possible. The biggest delay in getting assistance is that lack of documentation. I will also tell you, though, make sure it's us. It's, if it's an email, it will say sba.gov at the very dot gov, sba.gov. And if they call, it may be on an open number. You can answer it and get a phone number and call them right back if you're not comfortable with them saying who they are, because they're going to ask for personal information.
Can we have your link to put on our social media page?
Oh, yes. You have, you have a lot of information coming, and I reached out to the Public Information Officer yesterday. And Abe and I have been talking, and we're going to talk again now that I'm here. I'm going to be moving closer to you all. They're going to reposition me, so I'll be better able to assist you moving forward. We just haven't gotten all those logistics done yet. They're deploying people to Maui right now, so.
A quick question. The, you said, you gave the example, like a gas station with the economic impacts that we covered. Does that apply to small businesses around the county that were impacted, particularly like Corcoran?
Yes, small businesses, private nonprofits and small ag co-ops. And you may have some small ag co-ops. You'll know better than I do, but I think you do. I know from going to farmers markets, I run across some of them. But yes, if that is exactly what that is.
You've seen the videos of like the houses, Hanson Homes that are underwater on the south side of Corcoran. That's all over national media. Like, so in a case like that, you're saying you guys could help them repair, rebuild up to 500,000?
Up to 500,000, depending on their losses. We don't cover what insurance does, so we're going to help with whatever is not reimbursed elsewhere, and that's brand new. You actually just hit the sweet spot, because it was 200,000 before. Now it's 500,000 and 100,000 for the company. And that includes an automobile.
Anyone want to say anything? I know we're on schedule. The council's getting nervous. Abraham.
Yes, I am getting a little bit nervous, but.
We, we do thank you for coming and the long, and the long drive from Kern County. Thanks for working with Abraham and that office there.
Just one, I just want to add that I am working with SBA to bring a disaster assistance center so that it's not just online for people for a location, and their, their team will be there. I'll kind of work out a couple days, maybe a big trip, or maybe the residents could go, business owners could go and ask.
Appreciate it. You did reach out, and thank you.
If he's, since, since, can't even talk, successful, I would encourage people to use that expertise right there on the spot. Case in point, your question.
Yeah.
They can get.
Right. A lot of people did a lot of stuff ahead of the flood, you know, and they spent a lot of money, built levees, and then thump, thump, getting things done. And they didn't get flooded. They were protecting themselves. So it wasn't a disaster on their end, but they spent a lot of money out of pocket to protect themselves. So it'd be nice if they get some that recoup.
Well, I'll do some research when I get back, get some time today. And he and I talk pretty often. So whatever we need, I'll leave some business cards. And if you need me to go into the communities and make a presentation, like I said, I'll be here moving closer to.
Good, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thanks, Abraham. Okay, close it back up, and we'll go down to the study session. Item A, Behavioral Health Department. Morning.
So good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Kelsey Leppe. I am the Deputy Director of Administrative Services at Kings County Medical Health. So I am before your board to conduct a study session related to mobile crisis psychiatric services. Next slide. So the objectives of this study session are to inform the board regarding what is mobile psychiatric crisis services, the new Medicaid mobile crisis benefit, the Kings County Mobile Crisis Planning Act results, and the next steps in mobilizing psychiatric crisis services throughout the county of Kings. We're very excited about this project. So the first objective, what is mobile psychiatric crisis services? So mobile psychiatric crisis services are a rapid response with brief individual assessment and community-based stabilization to individuals in the community who are experiencing a behavioral health crisis. They are provided 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year by a multidisciplinary team, mobile crisis team, at the location where the individual is experiencing the crisis. This could be at the individual's home, school, at their workplace, on the street, at the park, et cetera. The services are designed to provide relief to the individual through de-escalation and stabilization techniques, reduce the immediate risk of danger and subsequent harm, and avoid unnecessary emergency department care, psychiatric inpatient hospitalization, and law enforcement involvement. They include warm handoffs to appropriate settings and providers when the individual requires additional stabilization and or treatment services. They include coordination with and referrals to appropriate health, social and other service supports as needed, and short-term follow-up support to help ensure the crisis is resolved and the individual is connected to ongoing care. For an information notice that I'll talk about later, in this slide, for instance, the state requires it within 72 hours of the mobile crisis response for that team or somebody connected to that program to reach back out to the individual in crisis or the family unit to make sure that whatever leakages and supports they were leaked to has occurred and to help mitigate any issues if they haven't occurred. So next slide, the best practice toolkit for behavioral health crisis care released by Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, aka SAMSHA, documented that approximately 70% of those engaged in mobile crisis services resulted in community stabilization. This is the current stabilization rate by the county's contracted crisis program who conducts crisis evaluations primarily in the local emergency room. Therefore, the 70% could have possibly avoided use of the emergency room and involvement in transportation by law enforcement if stabilization could have been done by the mobile crisis teams in the community with follow-up care. And when I say 70%, And when I say 70%, you'll see later, the statistics are about 1,200 to 1,400 crisis contacts a year done by the current crisis team. So that equates to about 900 individuals that would necessarily avoid even if they go to the emergency room and also avoid needing involvement in transportation by law enforcement. So they're better able to safeguard those resources for what their needs are and us bring those services instead to the community. And the clinical impact is that the individual is able to remain in their natural community setting, at their residence, if they're youth especially, and not be transported by law enforcement to the ER. And then sometimes the crisis is exacerbated by just being in the ER itself. The next slide. So the next objective of this study session is to discuss the new Medicaid mobile crisis benefit. So while we were going to the community and doing a planning session, well before this, DHS also then released during that time, a Medicaid mobile crisis benefit information notice. So they released the requirements for counties to actually conduct mobile crisis benefits. So we were really poised in the head of all, be getting prepared for this, which we appreciated. So the new Medicaid mobile crisis benefit is through the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, of 2021, which allows states, it's by the feds, and it allows states to add mobile crisis services as a covered Medicaid benefit for a five-year period ending March 31st, 2027. Additionally, ARPA provides an opportunity to receive an enhanced 85% federal medical assistance percentage, FMAP, for the first 12 quarters of the five years. So essentially the first three years of the five years. For context, the FMAP is used to calculate the amount of federal share of state expenditures for Medicaid services. Therefore, the federal share of the Medicaid service, the mobile crisis service, during the first three years of this five-year period will be at an 85% match or coverage by the federal expenditures. California average FMAP is 50%. So with the ability and states to add this benefit, California Department of Healthcare Services added this benefit to Medi-Cal and released guidelines to counties in December 2022. And then, and then revised those and released an additional information notice in June 2023 to counties. And these information notices detail the various requirements of counties to develop and implement mobile crisis services within their county jurisdiction. Next slide. So during this same time, as I mentioned, Kings County Behavioral Health was conducting community planning for the mobilization of crisis services. This planning effort was funded through a grant Kings County Behavioral Health was awarded and brought before your board to receive the funding on October 4th, 2022. The objective of this planning effort was to best understand the need and design of mobile crisis services for the county of Kings through the voice of key stakeholders like law enforcement, like the emergency room, and from the county, the community and county as a whole. The planning efforts took place from February 2023 through June 2023, of which the results are represented on the following slides. First, Kings County Behavioral Health convened a stakeholder group to help design the community planning effort and interpret the results. The stakeholder group was comprised of about 30 individuals from various representations, including but not limited to Kings County Behavioral Health attendants, law enforcement from Hanford PD, from the Sheriff's Department, from probation, Kings County Office of Education, the Naval Air Station, particularly the Family Support Services, the Family Support Group, the Central Valley Regional Center, Adventist Health, most particularly the Emergency Room, mental health and substance use disorder providers throughout the county, and many more. The stakeholder group completed the planning process, designing it, and did this through online surveys in Spanish and English, focus groups, and key informant interviews. These efforts took place during April and May of 2023. The efforts resulted in 796 community surveys, 70 provider and entity-based surveys, primarily those taken by law enforcement and behavioral health and medical providers in our community, four focus groups with a total of 46 participants, two key informant interviews primarily with those who are actually responding crisis currently, which are the emergency room and the current county contracted crisis program, and a data analysis of current and prior fiscal year crisis data so we can understand the landscape as it stands now through our non-mobile crisis services. So this is the detailed planning results report that we produced. And you'll see that it has a lot of details summarizing all the various questions that we asked. There was lots of questions that we asked. We also went through all of the, the data that, of the individuals who responded, as well as broke down even farther the detail of the crisis data so that we ensured that our, the voice was inclusive of various geographic areas within the county, various demographics of the population within the counties, really to try to make sure that we didn't have much disparity and there were the voice maybe lost in process. So this detailed report is available to anybody who would like it. However, the summary of the planning results, I'll try to summarize here. There was a lot of feedback. So with regards to the data, we'll start there. In fiscal year 2021, 2022, there were 1,286 crisis contacts by the current crisis team, primarily in the ER. And in the first eight months, which is what we had at that time, of fiscal year 22, 23, there were 943 contacts. So if you project that out, we're looking at about 14 hundred contacts by the end of 2023. Of those contacts, there were approximately 120 psychiatric crisis contacts documented per month. So if we break down the volume of crisis contacts per month, it's about 120. And approximately 20 crisis contacts occur per day, Monday through Friday or Thursday. And then it declines to about 10 to 15 per day, Friday through Sunday. So it's likely to have crisis at once happier on. So survey respondents and focus group participants were in favor of mobilizing psychiatric crisis services. Everybody that was asked was in agreement that this was a necessary service to be added within the county. Next slide. So as for the statements, so really trying to synthesize what were the statements by and large made through the questions that were asked of the survey, these are kind of the synthesized responses of the, where we were able to find commonalities in responses. So community planning respondents and participants stated, the services should be through trained mental health professionals coupled with peers who can help relate and guide. Crisis team providers should be culturally diverse and linguistically competent. A booklet should be made and disseminated during crisis so family is aided in, in the process that's occurring, the process to follow, and how they can engage. Response time and follow-up should be primary focus. Law enforcement should not be involved in responses unless warranted. Transportation should be through mobile crisis team if warranted and only through if, if the crisis team is unable to do it due to a medical emergency, it would be through an ambulance and through imminent threat, it would be through law enforcement. So the primary characteristics, what we did ask during the survey was, in your opinion, your perception as a community member or as somebody who's experienced a crisis or had a loved one who experienced a crisis, what do you think may have caused the crisis? What are the characteristics? What do you think helped during the crisis? What do you think exacerbated the crisis? So trying to really synthesize this, the common thread that we found through all of it is that for the community perception as stated through survey results, were drugs, primarily methamphetamine was noted, and alcohol, family or domestic issues, and the death of a loved one seem to be most common mentioned characteristics of a crisis, which when we were interpreting Kings County Behavioral Health, we more so know the crisis from what then is the end result? We're getting called because of a suicidal ideation, homicidal ideation, or an inability to care for themselves through lack of capacity. So it was interesting to see that the community was always seeing the characteristics from almost like a root cause analysis, which gave us a lot of better insight into maybe what was, they were feeling is this then culminates as somebody feeling suicidal. And so we wanted to explain that because it was something that's quite unique and actually kind of be of great benefit for our information. Other questions asked were related to design intricacies such as, is a community would like a marked bar or an unmarked bar to respond? Would they like a team dressed in like business casual or like I'm dressed, you know, with a shirt that knows who they are? Or in a uniform? The community was split. It was almost a 50/50 response on this. So I don't know if we go to rock paper scissors. So with the new Medicaid mobile crisis benefit, the results of the Kings County Mobile Crisis Community Planning Grant, these are the next steps in mobilizing psychiatric crisis services to the county of Kings as a whole. So in the last half of this calendar year, we intend to go to release a request for proposal to identify a vendor to provide mobile crisis services. In October, by October 31st, 2023, the department needs to submit to the State Department of Healthcare Services an implementation plan per the requirement of the prior information that is noted. The first half of the calendar year of 2024 will be executing a contact with the awarded vendor of the request for proposal process. Once that's executed, we intend that that would be by, you know, later than the summer of 2024, that that vendor can then start doing program starting, which includes, it takes a bit of a process. It includes hiring and recruiting the staff, training the staff. There is very specific trainings required in these information notices by the state. The ability to lease and furnish a building for their call center, the ability to purchase vehicles and technology and get those deployed, as well as other little intricacies like sort of buying the building for billing purposes, things like that. Typically, we give about a 90-day startup period, but that is kind of a very condensed fast startup period considering. And so we do anticipate though, that if they're able to do the 90-day startup period, that they could potentially go live withdrawing all services to the community as a whole by August 1st, 2024. But it would be no later than December 31st, 2024, depending on anything that may cause any delays in the process that was mentioned. Bye. If I'm available for any questions you may have, and thank you for your coming.
Thanks for the presentation and the information. Any questions or comments from the board? Sue Robinson?
Hi. My, my mother-in-law, she passed, but she was bipolar schizophrenic. So we had these interactions with law enforcement many times. So who makes a determination about 51/50? Does law enforcement do that? Do you do that?
So law enforcement can initiate a 51/50 hold if they, if they are trying to, if they determine that they need to bring the individual in for further evaluation by a licensed professional. That then our crisis team is trained to be able to then do the crisis evaluation thoroughly under the involuntary hold protocols. And they determine whether or not the person needs to be on hold. And then they reevaluate through the process because there's time frames throughout the process to reevaluate. Because the person has stabilized and not.
If you determine that it's, that it's drugs or meth or say alcohol, do you continue to work through your process? Do you turn them over to law enforcement? How does that work?
So we do. So psychiatric crisis, so psychiatric crisis is far more of a broad capture and ability. So once you get into outpatient, then it becomes quite specific, mental health is here, substance use disorders there. But for crisis, substance-induced psychosis or substance-induced crisis can be put on a 51/50 hold during the time that they're experiencing that. And then at sometimes they, as they're coming down from that substance-induced crisis, they may actually stabilize. But we continue to evaluate to see if there's kind of a root problem that still needs to be addressed.
So once they get called, they can't review service, right? Once the phone call made for help and they, you have someone that's not having a good day and they're feeling suicidal, but they haven't really said anything yet, they refuse service? How do you get them to comply to use their services?
Right. So they can review services. If we have, a lot of times, you know, we might have a crisis call. I think many times we have crisis calls by family members. So the individual is not necessarily calling on themselves. And so depending on the triage of the situation, we would still go out and meet with the individual. And if we feel that they are a harm to themselves, that they meet the criteria of harm to themselves or others are bravely disabled, then we put them on an involuntary hold. That's so they, that while they can refuse, if they're going to be a harm to themselves or others are brave, or they're gravely disabled, we're able to put them on a hold and it is an involuntary hold. And then they get transported to the local ER and place them down for inpatient hospitalization.
Yeah. So Supervisor Ruben and Supervisor Robinson, we can take into account what the family tells us or what the folks around someone tell them. It doesn't have to come directly from that person. And the 51/50 laws have changed a little bit and we can take both historical and family information into that decision. It is a clinical decision. Who is allowed to place a 51/50 hold other than law enforcement is determined by me, by the Director of Behavioral Health. I authorize who can do that. So right now, that's the people who work on our crisis team, which happens to be Kingsview at this moment. There has been in the past, I think you might have had some visits from some doctors in the ER, sometimes pushing for that authorization. I have withheld that. It is considered a conflict of interest. It could be if a doctor is trying to withdraw a 51/50 hold, especially in ED where they're trying to move people out as quickly as possible. So we need to make sure that we designate who we know will not have a conflict and who will be appropriately trained. And so as we go into this new process, we will be expanding who can provide a 51/50 hold. It will actually expand to some of our clinics. So we'll have some licensed clinicians in some of our larger clinics that will be able to place that hold. So that will be something that will change as we go forward.
I know in the past, we talked about having a place for people to go that don't require medical attention and don't require custody. Is there a place that you can take people with this service for a mobile unit? Do you have a place that they can stay overnight before they go and.
No, we actually, we actually just heard a, we don't have anything global with regards to a crisis stabilization unit. I will say that we do have an emergency process wherein if an individual needs to rapidly get into outpatient services, they can do so. I believe that that's within 48 hour country. So we do try to rapidly place an outpatient, but I think that they need more like a crisis, like to go to a residential facility. We just toured a facility that opened in the city of Tulare that is hoping to taking Tulare County and Kings County clients, any county's client, but we are too. And so we are initiating the contract with them. The individual that would go there is somebody who is not on an involuntary hold but is desiring the ability to be placed in a residential facility for that kind of intensive care to help them through a crisis at the time. Their length of stay is between 14 and 28 days. They enjoy the days in like five to seven weeks a day. And this facility is not just for individuals with medical health or, but also for privately insured individuals. So, and it takes voluntary walk-ins as well. So we are like really blessed to be able to help us into our surrounding neighborhoods that we look for, that we believe in with. Because it also will if law enforcement or mobile crisis and innocent people be mostly the ones under. If we have an individual that is voluntarily on, we don't need to initiate a voluntary hold. They want voluntarily get services and so into this place. We can actually then leave them, make them, transport them to this facility. They can get assessed and avoid.
Most of these problems, do they happen during business hours or in the evening time?
Yeah. So we did look, one of our full insurance specialists literally went through each line, hour by hour, and mapped out in his final report when they refer. So the, the most common occurrence happens between 2:00 and 3:00 PM during the day. So, but between 2:00 and 3:00 and then usually around midnight. So those are our beats. And then usually once you get past midnight, it goes very quiet and you start to get into the morning.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, questions from the board? I got two real quick. Thank you. You put out a lot of information. Just to, the, when you talk about going to other communities, is that a proactive outreach or in setup or is that? Or is that just response and call? You get a call from Lamor, so now you have Lamor, having a.
Right, so it'd be dispatching. It's very much like the nine-one-one dispatching. We have a dispatch center. However, there is the need within this mobile crisis program to do a lot of outreach to make sure that we are poised where we need to be for where the crises are most likely occurring and for the fastest response that we can do.
Thank you. And then when you spoke about ARPA funds, these are your own ARPA funds that you reached out to and you received on your own separate from the allotment to Kings County?
This is separate from the allotment to Kings County, but these are actually ARPA funds that the state received from the federal government that they then are rolling out to counties that require all counties to go to mobile crisis services. And luckily, though, ARPA is what is able to actually set that order rate during at least a period.
And I know it's the study session. Were you looking for any correction from the board?
No.
Thank you. Last call.
Yeah, I got.
Sue Robinson.
So if I see somebody acting erratically, am I able to call? Or does it have to be that person or a family member?
We hope to work through it, kind of, with law enforcement.
One of the things this does is it helps to break down the silo between a crisis and nothing. You know what I mean? We have urgent condition processes we've put in place the last couple of years so we can get somebody in, open to our services, even to see a psychiatrist within forty-eight hours, which is amazing that we can get people in that quickly. But sometimes people don't know that. And so if we have contact with the crisis team, then we can use these other processes we have to get people into services, to get them into the right outpatient team. So there will be more of a flow between the services that we've been building over the last couple of years and crisis. This is kind of the capstone of that whole system.
And for those online, that's Dr. Lisa Lewis.
I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce myself.
She has the power to declare fifty-one-fifty. I didn't know that. Stay on her good side. I know I am.
Not on a Tuesday.
Sheriff Robinson. Thank you. Morning, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. This is a topic that's near and dear to me. I oversee the jail and probably operate the largest mental health facility here in the county. Not by choice, but because of the issues that we have. Some of the information I heard today, I hear for the first time, and I think it's wonderful. Who can declare a fifty-one-fifty is a topic of concern for me, and I'm glad to hear that we will actually have folks in the behavioral health department that will declare fifty-one-fifty, but that's currently not the case. And I'm glad to hear that. I would also like to see the behavioral health director and managers included in those that can declare a fifty-one-fifty. Law enforcement is literally trained for a few hours on declaring a fifty-one-fifty placement hold, a few hours. People who work in the behavioral health department go to college and get degrees in the mental health crisis, but they don't declare a fifty-one-fifty. I do want to see that change going forward. We need more help, not less help. More people that will do it, not less people. I have differing opinions than many people who declare a fifty-one-fifty. I think if you're a nineteen-year-old addicted to fentanyl, you're fifty-one-fifty. You're making bad choices in your life that can kill you. That's a danger to self. Not everybody agrees with me on that, and I would like to see that change. If we're going to have a true impact, we have to do some severe changes in the world without mental health and putting more of it. I believe most of the data that's provided does address some of my concerns that I have. There was one slide that talked about, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that these things fall off. It's potentially true, but it's based on where you get your data from. I have a dispatch center. Hartford has a dispatch center. Portland has a dispatch center. We get a lot of calls for service from mental health needs that never make it to behavioral health and never make it to the hospital, but that doesn't mean that there wasn't a mental health crisis. There are plenty of after-hours issues that we run into in law enforcement that need this addressed. And, you know, I'd like to see the timeline moved up faster to come back a year from now, to, you know, have this implemented. It's a little slow for me. But if there's baby steps and that can happen along the way, I think that would be helpful. We can put together some calls for service data that might help in determining when this mobile crisis team will be needed. And, but it's going to be a twenty-four-seven operation. And, and I get it. You know, not too many people go to a four-year college, a six-year college, or an eight-year college to work twenty-four-seven types of operations to come out on weekends and nights and holidays. And so there's going to be, you know, a lot of the lower-level staff that are probably doing those types of roles. But this is, this is a big deal. One of you mentioned the inpatient treatment for those that volunteer and are willing to go. We need more of that, and we need that in Kings County. I appreciate that Tulare County's one that take on so large. We need that here in Kings County, and there's probably not one person in this room that will say we don't like to see that we go that direction, to have that available here in Kings County. I'd also like to see some numbers on what the repeat offenders are. We talked about twenty crises per day, but how many of those are the same person? You know, I know that in our world, we have a lot of repeat offenders and those should be our target populations, try to think something about. And there is an overlap, obviously, between this topic and the next topic. And so, you know, just put that on the radar. I really appreciate this, and I don't stand here to critique the work that's been done. I think this is great. I've been looking forward to this for about three years now. I'd like to see it sooner rather than later, and we're definitely here to work with, obviously, your team to implement this, and if we can make it happen faster, that will be my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Back loose, you want to talk about the timeline and any possibilities to?
Timeline is going to be as fast as we can possibly move. Absolutely. See it sooner. We will move as fast as we can. I just wanted to speak about the training of people who get, who put people on fifty-one-fifties. Having been through both a master's degree and a doctoral program in behavioral health, I was never trained on this subject. In fact, most programs do not train you on how to make a decision about a fifty-one-fifty. And we're trained on a lot of other things. And a lot of the work that happens when people come into our field is done by the supervisors who then train them up. A master's degree is basically just an entree into our field. It is not a comprehensive education at all. So one thing that's happened in the past, and when I used to oversee a crisis team, I was kind of surprised to find this, is that most of the crisis workers are trained by each other. It's been a, almost like an apprenticeship kind of experience in the past. That is no longer the case because the state is turning the focus onto this. They are now starting to provide us with very specific training, which we are going to be able to engage folks in, which has really never been available to us in the past quite the way it is. So we're going to have some really great training coming up, and everybody will be training the same. So this is a great progress in standardization that we have.
So you don't have training. How do you declare your stuff and stand?
You learn. You learn through supervision. Yeah, I spent nine years in outpatient clinics. And when I was an intern, I didn't place holds. When I became licensed, I worked with the manager who was, who had about twenty years of experience overseeing the crisis team. And so when I needed to make a decision, I would call him. He would work me through it. We'd write the paperwork. We'd place the hold, take the person to the ambulance, and I started to learn over time. So it takes years of experience and education and supervision.
All right, thanks. Good question. So I know you mentioned family input, but do you give a heavy emphasis to that? Because they, a lot of times, they, the potential patient, they're very good at talking themselves out of that, that hole. And so a lot of times, you have to hear the whole history before you can make the determination.
And we want to pull on our own records. We want to have access to our records so we can look up what's in the history of the electronic health record for that particular client. That's also extremely helpful for us because if we know that six months ago, they were on their medication and they were saying, seeing Dr. Wizenhut, and all of a sudden, now they're decompensating. The family's saying, no, we don't think she's taking the medication. And we looked at, well, she missed two doctor's appointments with the doctor. We have a pretty good idea what's going on. So that kind of background is really important to us. Always, we always seek that. Also, let me just add, that's one of the reasons that our new electronic health record is going to be very important to us, which we just have been implementing this month.
Thank you. All right, guess we're ready to close it out.
Yeah, just one more thing. So it's really exciting to, thinking we reach out. I agree. I think the numbers are very low. We're kind of embarking on something that, like we did with our new children's program provider, where access almost doubled. And we were trying to everything we can to keep up with that and reshape the program so long as we go. I think that the numbers that I was pulling was from a non-mobile crisis program. And so we can think that once the pain is able to fall and that will come out and start to become tribe and become more trusted with the system, that we expect the numbers are going to be much larger, and we will, we could grow and expand however it is to meet the need of the community. Though absolutely, the numbers are low. And also with regards to the placement. So in the SAMG National Best Practice toolkit that was released in February two thousand and twenty that we've all states and counties have been studying, they do say that kind of the things that we need to really become best practice to addressing crisis and being able to really help those stay out of going through the pressure from all over, is to have then from like mobile dispatch to a multi-dispatched team, to then having crisis stabilization and crisis with residential, both something that can then help. Because when somebody goes into crisis, if they do undergo an involuntary hold, the length of stay in a hospital is around seventy-nine days because of what we are, we're going to stabilize and then move on to the most appropriate long-term solution. So they obviously all of the companies, they're fully. It's the same here, all with either residential or outpatient. And so we would like to have that eventual point to confirm when you're wrong, so there was a link for that. But at the same time, we need to build in different community treatments, mobile crisis services. We need to build in the building blocks that then will best lend itself to having then this crisis stabilization unit or just become like a company. So I look forward to reaching all the building blocks.
So we all talk about crisis, and that's when, you know, people are, but had the family at a dinner or after work or someplace, not getting along, the true crisis. It didn't start there. It started somewhere earlier. So do you have access for, say, a family that had a dis-able family member that had some issues, that they can make a phone call? Maybe we can come out before to crisis? Do you have access to that, too?
Yeah, so the information that was released by the state is that any crisis call, it doesn't necessarily need to be, I have suicidal at age, if there has been an actual one. But any crisis can call, and if they feel that they need to even go through crisis or they need to crisis can be called. And there's requirements then of the crisis team to start that triage or whatever it's on. And we have to have their data, we have to set up sort of calls up when we would actually respond in the mobile or versus, or taking the information we actually feel like this needs to be more, instead of a mobile response, we need to actually now do inverted conditions where we connect that individual possibly to outpatient setting within forty hours. So they'll really be able to triage it. So we're kind of open, we're following this. And as for being able to start. Faster, but it's just the natural force of showing the request for proposal, especially through federal funds. Whole process and. Just as natural. But we've done some things to mitigate where we do. Another grant that we wrote, through CHAFA, that was brought before this board, wherein we can have a pilot mobile crisis team, specifically in schools, to be able to assist youth and children in crisis that are happening at the schools. And we see that, that some kind of thing October and begin of this calendar year because we already have two-to-seven programs, so we're able to actually so-so and deliver that by staffing on top of that. So that, we will at least start with a pilot for children and youth at the schools. We also have been encouraged by the state, all counties have, to, especially for small counties, to try to regionalize the services. So we have reached out to some of our surrounding counties that ask where they're at, what are they doing? Is that we work somewhere? Would it fit with us? How do we feel about it? And so we are trying to talk to other counties to see if something would fit in a regional approach, wherein we're sharing the chunk of a mobile crisis program. But the teams, though, are stationed here in Kings County because we all have to be the exact same families of the same community. And some are farther along, and that then being able to feed that on that, if it meets our needs, because our families are specific, would then actually be a long, far more critical. For instance, if we're able to regionalize the right counties, they have a program startup as January. We're looking at all approaches, if I think that are ready to.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Appreciate the good information, good questions. Thank you. That takes us to our last study session. Comes from Human Services Agency. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Wendy Osikoff, Director of Human Services. Today, I'm here to provide you an update on our two project home key projects. The timing of this, next week, you guys will be considering the response to the grand jury. Just really wanted to make sure you have the most updated information so that you could prepare for a informed response. In August of, next slide please. In August of two thousand and twenty, HSA collaborated, collaborated with two community-based organizations on two different projects. We collaborated, collaborated with Kings-Tulare Homeless Alliance on the Sunrise Apartments and with Cornerstone Industries on Triangle Courtyard. The, the projects are designed to provide permanent housing that will serve individuals that have income limits up to thirty percent of the average median income. That's really this individual, that's seventeen thousand dollars annually. And the two projects, when completed, will result in forty-six permanent housing units that will provide a total of about seventy beds to individuals. The first project I want to talk about is Triangle Courtyard. As I mentioned, this is a partnership with Cornerstone. We went into contract in December two thousand and twenty with the state and also into contract with Green Galaxy Builders, who's the original contractor on the project. The project is for twenty-four manufactured homes. It did require site development at the land donated by Cornerstone. Green Galaxy Builders did deliver twenty of the twenty-four units, and they completed, I kind of want to take out the word most, but they completed site development work in terms of getting sewer, water, main infrastructure to the site itself. But they did not complete the groundwork to get sewer, water, electrical to each of the twenty-four units. So that work was not completed. The, we suffered numerous delays, many missed deadlines, breaches of contract. And ultimately, in October of two thousand and twenty-two, we determined that we were going to terminate that contract. We also, at that time, next slide, worked with Cornerstone on a takeover agreement. And Cornerstone agreed to take over both the financial and the construction responsibilities to complete the project, to see the project to completion. Since then, let me catch myself back up. Oh, here we go. Thank you, sorry, lost my place. So Cornerstone selected Prefab Innovations as the contractor for the remaining work on the twenty homes. And they quickly assessed the site. They've identified numerous issues that were not completed correctly by Green Galaxy. In addition, the four ADA units, we knew that Green Galaxy had only delivered twenty of the twenty-four, but they had affirmed to us that four of the twenty units would meet our ADA compliance requirements. That was not the case. And so we have four additional units that need to be completed on top of the, on top of the twenty that Green Galaxy had failed to provide. Work had to be recompleted, and so let me go over this Work had to be recompleted and so let me go over this to some things that had to be done that was repaired, Green Galaxy. The water main needed to be relocated. They needed to install the concrete electrical ball, reset all of the concrete here. They were not installed correctly in the correct locations on each of the twenty units. And then the water, sewer and electric to each of the sites, as I just previously mentioned. At this point in time, Cornerstone is indicating we have next slide. A budget for shortfall for the completion of the project. It's about five hundred and eighty thousand for the work remaining on the twenty units. This was really due to the increased expenses due to repairing the work of Green Galaxy as well as some damage that occurred during the winter storms to the trench work that had been done. And then additional five hundred and eighty for those four ADA units to get them built and then installed on site. Next slide. The work that's remaining is about seven to eight weeks worth of work to complete the project according to Cornerstone. We did recently go into contract or add to the contract expectations with Banner to do an assessment of the project, the work that's been completed to be, and the work remains, that we had an independent feedback on where we stood. They were able to confirm the work that was completed and that Cornerstone then shared with us. They were also able to confirm the timeline and projections in both terms, in terms of timeline and cost. That was being projected by Prefab Innovations for the completion of the work from the twenty units. Since, since we have been working diligently, I submitted this PowerPoint and the, the report two weeks ago for this board day. We have been working diligently to find additional resources as it is a cash flow issue at this point for to get the remaining work started. So some good news is that since the submission, Calviva and Anthem Blue Cross have awarded Cornerstone three hundred thousand dollars. The, the award, I believe Calviva indicated that their portion of the award should arrive in the bank and within the next week and Anthem's within the next twenty days. That money is going to allow them to begin the electrical work, which will then trigger the electrical site inspections. And so that's sort of the, one of the bigger milestones that you need to get over so that they can close up the groundwork and start doing some of the landscaping and, and the roadwork and the curves and sidewalks and all of the fine touches at the end. There still does remain a balance. That is only three hundred thousand of the shortfall. And we are continuing to look at options and include loans. I know that Mr. Clevenger's hearing can also speak to some of the efforts they are making in terms of seeking additional resources to complete this project. We are, we are on a deadline with the state for completion of December thirty first and I'm still, we're going to push for that completion deadline and hope that we can pull, pull together the necessary resources to meet those, those dates. Supervisor Verboon, you asked for a video and I am not tech savvy, but I do want to introduce Deputy Director Chris Naras. He put together just a short video, but they'll give you a little sense of the interior work on it.
Good morning, Chairman Vayan, Members of the Board. My name is Christopher Naras. I have the pleasure and honor to serve the residents of Kings County as the Deputy Director here for HSA. The video you're about to see is just some pictures and the walkthrough of Triangle Courtyard project. The photos were taken around mid-July and serves as a snapshot of where we currently stand. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about the video as well. You can go ahead and play the video. Edge of sizes are identical in terms of dimension. So each resident will have the same kind of size in terms of being able to store things or the.
Before I move to the next project and just see if there's any of our partners, if the partners are on the Prefab, or if the board has any questions. And then I'll move into the Sunrise Apartments.
So that would have been good to show us, you know, here a month ago. If we don't, when you drive by every day, it looks like it's in a van. And that's the public perception. We're wasting money. It's not doing a good use. That, that's very helpful. I understand. I can see progress. You know, Green Galaxy put us way behind. Well, I'm blaming Cornerstone for not doing their work. But it looks better than what I thought of them to look like. Like I said, we drive by, it's always abandoned. They had the one staircase in the middle. Like, okay, move the staircase, you know, make it look like you're doing something. And my, my history goes back to, we built a couple of schools and we always held back money until we got completed, completed project. We hold fifteen percent, twenty percent back till projects completed. Green Galaxy got all the money and they took it and didn't complete the project. We should have, should have been bonded out. Should have held some money back. The state put us behind because we had, we had to get it done. We had to use the money by a certain time. So not any one person's fault. It could be our fault because we jumped into a project that probably couldn't be completed. We do it, when I did the school, we always held back ten, fifty percent. And on one project we did, and this is where, you know, Dave, you know, might get offended by it. But I mean, when, when the contractor is out there doing the work, if he wants to get paid, that shows that he's serious about getting the project done. We had a project, we owed him, I think, three hundred thousand dollars for the project. And the sign out front wasn't at great level like the contract showed. I went there at five thirty in the morning and he was out there himself a lot like fixing if he wanted to get paid. And that just shows dedication by the contractor. He wants to finish it. So, you know, when you drive by and don't see any more activity, it's very frustrating. And I'm not the only one that notices that too. So, you know, if you have people out there working, you probably feel better about it. So I feel better now seeing that. And, you know, like I said earlier, we have the money to finish it, but I'm not just going to give it to anybody. I don't want to give the money wasted. I want to see the project finished and then we'll pay for it at that time.
Understood. We still are digging out from the, the issues with Green Galaxy. And one other component that I didn't mention in terms of the budget shortfall is when we terminated the agreement with Green Galaxy, we demanded repayment of the unspent money, which is well over five hundred thousand dollars. They, they refused to do that. And so there will likely be, you know, litigation around that. We handed that over in the takeover agreement. But that has just created a cash flow issue in addition to some of the other things mentioned.
Yeah, we wouldn't be there if we'd had them bonded out.
Yeah.
And not pay them. We, we can learn from this.
Yeah.
I certainly understand the perception and it doesn't offend me.
Can you identify yourself for the?
Sorry, Dave Clevenger from Prefab Innovations. The reality is a lot of the work that was going on had to be done by hand because some of the stuff that usually when you construct a project, you put all the underground in before you put buildings up, right? That was not done in this case. And in addition to that, when we had.
And that would be for you.
And so when we took that over, some of the electrical lines actually were so close to buildings that right here, that we had to move the trenches over and do work. And then they're working between them. So even though the perception, maybe it's not a lot of work going on, it's the same thing that I see when I pull up to it too. It, it's in the back and it's in between buildings. It's hard to see. But we did it. It's all prevailing rate work. So it eats up, it eats up to a bunch of dollars pretty quick getting stuff done. And so it, it's certainly not offensive to see that kind of perception. The reality is we've got a lot of work done. We're almost there. But the people that want us to get to that finished step. And as far as, you know, showing up and getting stuff done, there's numerous Saturday stuff down there. Enough working on trenches, doing stuff. There's no one more interested in seeing this project completed than me. I designed it four years ago. I've seen it all the way through to this point and still have a lot more to go after we're done for Pursuiting Galaxy for what they've done to this project, the Cornerstone. I mean, we'll see.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swobbe, Steve Barson.
Dave, I just have a, a couple of questions. I, I know you got flooded out. I know that sets you back. But why did the water take so long to get out? Why did it take so long to pump out?
The whole site had a lot of water in it. So there's some low areas in the, specifically in the middle and then right up front on the north side of the project. There is a, a low area where they took some dirt and packed it back down. Well, all of that stuff was basically a lake. So when you have all your trenches filled up with water, where are we going to pump water out? We're the lowest area there. So we had to let it seep down. Then we got pumps in and pumped out the trenches. What happened with our trenches, when they were open and clean, straight up and down, where we could put in the conduit and run what we needed to run, they all now became this sort of concave smoothed out hole. They needed to be recut. And then getting, so it's different when you're on flat ground and cutting it out. But when it's like this, now you've got to go a lot slower and make sure you're being safe with your equipment and people to just slow it. Get that perception too. Just pump it and go. There's nowhere to send it. We need to let it seep down and they got, got it done.
And the last thing, so the step we just recently took was I think Banner went and, and kind of figured out the scope, figured out what was completed and what was sufficient, et cetera. When you first did that, when you took from Green Galaxy, seems like we missed a lot there, right? Because a lot of overages now where we went back to, well, they didn't exactly do it right. Is that accurate?
So on the surface, yes. When you walk through it, you go, okay. You can see some of the problems, some of the stuff that needs to be done, right? But when it comes to actually starting to do the work, there was other things that were uncovered specifically with, when we walked around with the building official and with the inspectors, right? One of them was those four units that they said were going to be used for the accessible part of this project. And they even had the forms made for putting lamps right on front of us. Immediately there, they said, are these the ADA units we're supposed to have here? The, the doors aren't big enough. There's a threshold. Bathrooms aren't going to work. And at that point, that was need to go on. Yeah, I hadn't even considered at that point, just sort of forget that those four units were going to be accessible. As far as the electrical lines go, we start putting in, when we started doing the dirt work and we start paying attention to the site map, where it's supposed to go, measuring stuff out. That was not something I did prior to that. When we did, we noticed it's right against the hill. So yeah, there's some steps that you learn along the way that as you get deep into this, you go, there's more. Inspectors wanted the peers moved because they were, they were right. They were not in the right location installed by previous contractor. But what the plans say, what the action building needs, that's other work that came up as we, as we iterate, we just. It's not uncommon for contracts to happen.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to the next part. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Stephen. So our next project is the Stardust Hotel, which is being converted to the Sunrise Apartment. Apartment. That is a partnership with the Kingsley Homeless Alliance. We also went into contract December of 2020 and that was to purchase the site itself and some adjacent parking. And convert twenty three hotel rooms to two, twenty two studio apartments and one of them being a onsite manager suite. The state allowed up to ten years for conversion. We said we would do it in five. And so our deadline for completion on this project is December 2025. We used the initial, initial home key funds to actually purchase and procure the property, but we knew that we would need additional funds to fund the conversion work. While, while we were procuring the funds and because it was also a COVID emergency, we, we were able to meet the interim housing requirement because we were operating Project Room Key out of that site. And so while all of these projects required some level of temporary housing while you're waiting to do the permanent, the permanent buildup. And so we met that immediately. Next slide. We also were able, while we had occupancy of Project Room Key, we were also able to complete the phase one renovations. Those included significant accessibility upgrades to meet ADA compliance. There are some environmental, environmental abatement work, remodeling of the management office unit. And they were able to convert and upgrade six of the rooms, except for the kitchen. The kitchen installs in those six rooms, but they were able to like upgrade the flooring and repurpose those rooms. They did some outdoor repairs. They repainted the building at that time. And so between the acquisition and the phase one cost, we spent about four million dollars on, on, on that, that phase of the work. Next slide. In 2022, so that was all happening in 2021, basically. In 2022, most of the efforts were continuing the Project Room Key operations, but also securing additional funds so we could complete phase two. This is a summary of the various funding sources. You can see that we, we have contributors from a lot of different entities and agencies. And next slide, we are, we were able to secure all of the funding in late 2022. I think the biggest grant was the PLHA of seven hundred thousand, closed, closed our final gap. I think we got approval for that in October or November. It might have been November. So in December and January, we, we started to relocate the Project Room Key residents in anticipation of construction. While KTHA and Upholding worked to give the, the plans and permits in place so they could begin phase two of construction. That was done through the winter and early spring. And they've now, they're fully in progress on phase two, which is remodeling the remaining sixteen units, installing the kitchens in all twenty three. Upgrading the plumbing. This is an old building. You can imagine as they tear things apart, they find issues. They've done a lot of pipes that have been rusted and need to be replaced. So they're going through that. They also have to install a new parking lot and sidewalks and some other requirements of the city for the surrounding prop, on the surrounding property. The cost estimate to complete all of that is about three and a half million dollars. We do expect that the majority of the construction work will be completed by December of 2023. There is one, you know, there always has to be one thing. And it's the switchgear. And so they ordered, once they got the permits done, they ordered back in like March or April the switchgear, which has a twelve month back order. And things I never thought when I got my degree in social work that I'd be speaking about or know anything about, but I'm like, go to a different vendor. There's got to be more than one person that sells switchgears. Well, they're on back order with anyone that produces them. And I guess it's a, it's a source material issue. And so whatever the switchgears are made of, I don't know if they mine, where they go to mine it, but that is really what the issue is. And so everything's on a twelve month back order. So if it comes before April, that will be great news. That will really be the main item remaining. But that, that is going to maybe push us back from the December twenty four hope that we had of getting this project completed. It doesn't impact us in terms of our compliance with the state. As I said, it's December 2025, which is our deadline there. So we'd still be fine without that. I also had Chris do a little video.
Yes, Chairman Vayan, Members of the Board, Chris Naras, again Deputy Director with HSA. The next video you're about to see is some before and after photos of what was formerly known as the Stardust Hotel. And as it's, as it's transitioned to Sunrise Apartments, the initial photos will show what Stardust used to look like, exterior and interior shots, as well as an in-progress video that shows some current kind of construction that's going on, as well as lastly, the model that has been kind of completed, missing the kitchenette. So let's go ahead and play the video. Again, all rooms will be about the same size. Some bright here, we'll leave it to that. On the right hand side. And if you ask, and all those pictures are there, we should put it in the action.
And the kitchenette is made somewhere else and it is set in the plate. You're all done, correct?
That's my understanding, correct.
And we do like, that we do have individuals who are still homeless clients and employees online if they've got anything to add or if the board has any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate the. So that's two years away for completion, right?
Well, we're actually, no, we're talking, did I say?
We need a switchgear.
Sorry. I said, everything should be done in December 2023. The switchgear April. Sorry, I said, if we, everything should be done, done in December 2023, the switchgear April 25.
Switchgear is electrical part for the power, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's the resin, can't get the resin from China, anything that has that resin involved in it, no one has it anywhere.
Thanks for affirming that, I keep asking and, thank you.
And IT producing, uh, 3D for nursing. Okay.
Anybody got a switchgear in their apartment, in their garage, anybody, when they're not using?
Who knows, you guys switchgear. All right. Questions to come?
No, I just think in the future, um, any other project, I know when we did the school project, uh, we had someone on site monitoring who was doing what, and then we had, we were updated once a week. It wasn't coming only when we were out of money. It was a current, current progress the whole time that we weren't caught off guard. Think in the future, uh, would identify someone to keep us informed constantly on where we're at, so that we don't think no one's doing that.
Understood, I think that, you know, we are, we are not good construction managers, we're like social workers and eligibility workers. And so this has been a huge learning curve for our department, and I think that we brought in Vanner, we brought them in twice, and but like bringing in someone that has that expertise, but can kind of keep the updates coming on a regular basis and knows what to look for, we don't know, that's not our real house, and so we always know what to look for, and, um, so.
We had, we had one, one contractor, he would come in every morning, he'd videotape before anybody else out there to cover his own butt, uh, to make sure that if some contractors are doing the work they say they're doing. So we gotta watch each other, uh, you know, we have our county and city inspectors that can watch over projects, and sometimes that's too late. But we gotta protect our own assets.
Just to echo Supervisor Brubin, uh, I, I had a round years ago that burned down. And so, uh, every day during the rebuild, I would, I would go by just to check on it. Uh, but there was a, there was a couple of days I missed, and one of the days I missed, they put the wrong color stucco on. And then I had to go away for a work trip, and I came back and the trim was painted chartreuse. Hard to rent out with chartreuse trim. So I guess all I'm seeing is, um, it's good just to take 10 minutes, whoever it is, whoever you assign to do it, every day, close to it, uh, just to check.
Put it in the budget and allow for someone to have your back.
You got a hard hat?
No, I need one, and I'd like to get a, uh, show our best thing.
You should pull up on him anytime, seriously, that's what he's saying.
Yeah, but no, no, not, not, because we don't know what we're looking at. If he was, she doesn't, she's not qualified to judge it, it's just like having someone declaring, you know, 50, you're not qualified. They can tell you whatever they want, but if not, it's fact, we pay someone to be your super to watch, watch your back and protect your interest in, in the project.
We have that in place now, and so I think, you know, getting through these last two, um, I don't want to say there won't be any more hiccups, but I, I, I think that'll be helpful.
No, it's not, we need responsibility, and, uh, she is in charge of passing the money through, so just protect ourselves on a money, go on through somebody else.
You're doing good, I know you inherited, uh, some of the projects and responsibilities and, uh, took some public criticism too. Uh, but, uh, you're doing well, thank you, appreciate you, thank you. Keep your head up, you want, okay. Then that takes us to board member announcements to wind this down, to manage, right?
Good, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, continue to watch the, uh, Telaya Lake, uh, water continues to recede, uh, pretty fast. I'm somewhat surprised, so if you've not had a chance to go out and see the water, uh, this might be a great opportunity. On Thursday, uh, August 10th, Kathy and I cooked about 300 hot dogs for the school backpack and school supply event in Stratford. Uh, area community, um, health center, uh, sponsored the event. There was also food distribution and a lot of supplies, uh, uh, and, and hot dogs. Uh, then the, uh, family healthcare center here in Hanford held a ribbon cutting for their new food pantry. Uh, certainly want to thank Calviva and the Kings County Community Action Organization that will support the food pantry, uh, that's located at 250 South, uh, Fifth Street across from, uh, Lacy Millie. Uh, the project will, uh, support not only the, uh, clients of, of family healthcare, but also the community. I think they've already served almost 700 people in the soft opening, that they've been there in, uh, 45 days or so, they've been open. It pretty much follows the, uh, whole person system of care, um, and so it's, it's, uh, I, I really like that model. Uh, it has worked well at the West Hills College, uh, Lemoore for the students. Uh, there's also groceries to go in, in Kettleman City, and certainly, um, you know, encourage that model. Um, also attended the USDA, uh, I mean, US Department of Housing and Urban Development exit interview. Um, they, uh, did a audit of the Kings County Housing Authority. Uh, there was one finding and 10 recommendations, uh, that were noted in the report, and we'll go over that as a whole board, uh, next week, uh, as we meet as the housing. On Saturday, attended the, uh, with, uh, the mayor of Lemoore, uh, the ribbon cutting at the Balaro, uh, gas station in Lemoore. Been to the west side of 41, uh, near La Prino. Uh, there's also cookies, uh, chicken and coffee and drinks, so it's, uh, open for business, ready to go. Um, so if you have an opportunity, drop by and see, it's a very nice layout. Um, and, uh, with school starting, um, Monday at the West Hills and some of the other, um, education out there on the west side, I think it'll be very well utilized. Um, also on Saturday evening, attended the premiere of the History of Central California Azorian Celebrations, um, a project of Fresno State that was, uh, held at the Carnegie Museum. Uh, the phase two of the Carnegie Museum of Portuguese in Kings County wrapped up on the weekend. Um, they will be, uh, dismantling it and then, uh, be opened up, I think in September, uh, for the final phase of the year-long celebration of Portuguese in Kings County. Uh, it was an outdoor screening, very nice evening, a little on the warm side. Uh, only lasted about 17 minutes, but traced back the history of, of celebrations, uh, from the Azores to the Central Valley. Many celebrations have already been active for over 100 years, and Riverdale will be reaching that milestone next year in 2024. Also attended, uh, the follow-up on the wellness blood draw on Monday. Um, I don't know if Jimmy's still on there, but that damn scales is still weighing heavy. Um, that's, uh, all the numbers were good except two, uh, some BMI number, I don't know what that is, and then the weight. So, uh, we'll have to work on and try to do an audit with that, uh, I, I'm not sure what's going on with that. Um, also starting a new project, uh, with the Ceremuni Museum Cemetery Walk in Lemoore, that will be on September 30th. I will be portraying my great-grandfather. And, uh, Kathy will be Maria. So I don't know how that's gonna work, uh, it's already, uh, pretty tough trying to work with somebody, so I've, uh, keep cutting her lines down so she'll have less work, but I am trying to teach her a little bit of Portuguese and trying to teach an Oki Portuguese is kind of tough, but, uh, we will continue to work on that. And the cemetery walk is all about visiting a grave of someone that's interned in the cemetery and then hear about their story. So we're gonna cover from, uh, 1880 to about September of 1943. So that's the timeframe, and we'll look forward to that.
That's just the more cemetery?
Um, you know, we've tried to get, um, uh, Kings County to do the Grangeville Cemetery. There's a lot of, uh, intern people there, uh, Muscle Slough, um, uh, that, that cemetery is, um, pretty historic, and there's a lot of people in there, but it takes a lot of work, and then finding people that will portray those that are interned. So, um, I think it's kind of a neat program, and, but it does take a lot of work and a lot of, um, research. But one of these days, it would, it would be nice, because there are, there are several, uh, people interned in Grangeville that I think would make some real interesting stories.
You do it on the gravesite?
At the gravesite itself, correct, yeah, yeah, so we'll, um, in, in the past, there have been six stations, and so when you show up, uh, you visit six different gravesites, and you'll have people there portraying, uh, that individual. So I think VD is going to be there for Badashi, uh, my, and, sorry, I can't remember the other four. But, um, there, there are all people that are interned in the cemetery. Then yesterday, um, the Lemoore High School, we, uh, had the preseason kickoff, uh, for football. For me, that makes the 40, 34th season. So, uh, if I can stay alive till Thursday and get the, uh, scale up to the stairs, uh, we will, I spent about 12 years on the sideline on the chain gang crew and 22 years in the booth, and one of these days, we'll give it up.
Shooting the cannon off, too.
Shooting the cannon off, that's kind of the fun part, and I still have all my fingers and toes. Um, I can't hear very good, I don't want to hear, but, um, yeah, everything's still working. With that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good work, sir.
Well, the only thing I'd like to thank staff for the transition into this room, it's a lot of work. It's last week watching, uh, Public Works and IT and Catherine, Diane running around like mice. Uh, that was, I think you've done a, a heck of a job, and you'd be commended with that. Thank you. You don't have to take credit, you just pass it on to somebody else.
Only one, what, only one, one page.
One, oh, one page. No, that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, and I just want to add to that as well, thank you again, Public Works. Uh, you guys came in on Friday, saw the, uh, looked in the chambers, and it was just amazing, uh, going from Tuesday to seeing the difference on Friday. All those stuff that's being pulled out, saw reel to reel sitting on there, and it's old equipment. I don't know if you guys have a deal with that, it's going to go on display somewhere, or toss it out, but it's pretty cool looking stuff. They'll, they'll look there. Um, and then also Catherine has on display, if you haven't been, uh, in the office, the, uh, the books of all the, um, the minutes to the Board of Supervisors going back to 1893, right Catherine? And you might remember the board passed some funding, um, a few years back to buy these nice cases and page by page out of the books. They put them in this plastic kind of cover wrapping, or whatever material it is to, uh, uh, keep it protected, museum-like display. But you ever get a chance, see Catherine, Diane.
I actually have a profile that's been coming soon to do a presentation to Charlotte.
Uh, very nice.
Yeah, the fireproof is here.
Oh, the fireproof, nice. Two hours for bed?
Uh, not much to add, I had a meeting with, uh, Salkeen Valley JPA, which is Amtrak Salkeen, meeting with new staff on our, our trip coming up next month to DC. Uh, we'll be on the same page when we go there.
Catherine, Diane, good job, uh, you didn't let grass grow, you immediately got on that. Uh, in the last few days, I met with, uh, Sheriff Robinson, spoke about homelessness and other department priorities. Uh, I also met with, uh, with DA Hatcher and toured the DA's office, uh, and, and I'm grateful to the DA's office for showing, uh, hospitality. Uh, we talked about, um, various things, but including the size, what their needs are and building issues. Uh, also met with, uh, newly hired economic director, Fabio Olivera, to discuss their micro, their macro priorities, and also just to, uh, discuss contacts and stuff through the community, so he can be more helpful in his, in his job. Good work, sir. That's my team.
So for board correspondence, your board received a correspondence from the Lemoore Cemetery District dated August 10th regarding the appointment of a board trustee for the Lemoore Cemetery District Board. For upcoming events, the Lemoore Lions Club will be hosting an annual brute fest on August 26th from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Lemoore Lions Park. The city of Hanford is hosting a free basic of starting a successful small business workshop on August 29th from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Stanford City Hall. And save the date for the ribbon cutting of the King's Building on August 30th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, this will be open to the public. The Kings County Sheriff Posse will be hosting their annual dinner dance crab feed September 9th, and event is being held at the Burris Park. And there will be Links for Life Pack, King Passion Picnic on Tuesday, October 17th. For upcoming agenda items, next week, we do have a large board meeting. CDA has two items relating to development code text changes, county council has two items, appointment of members to the Telaya Lake Reclamation District. Health has two items, an amendment to the WIC agreement and agreement with the California Department of Public Health for California, uh, vital record system. HSA has three items, agreement with California State President State, agreement with West Hills College, any annual recertification. IT has three items, a corpel maintenance agreement, spillman maintenance agreement, and matchment agreement. KTO has one item regarding a contractor agreement with San Joaquin County, and Public Works has six items, various park equipment leases agreements with, um, Public Health Department, um, and purchase of equipment. Yep.
The, um, when you were doing that, you reminded me, uh, if we could just, uh, maybe take a look at our process when we appoint somebody. Um, like I learned yesterday, uh, we had, uh, two appointments to the Corkham Cemetery District the board appointed back on July 25th, and, you know, that's been a high-profile, um, hot topic back home. So getting those, um, two people appointed to Cemetery District Board, uh, was good news that day. But I got an earful from one of the, um, applicants yesterday, he said, hey, when am I gonna find out whether I got appointed? And, and I assumed that they knew, I mean, I, I Facebooked it that day, but I didn't call them and say, hey, you got appointed. Um, but I understand that Council, County Council's office writes a letter, um, and they wrote it right away, that it got mailed out to field box, Corkham Cemetery District. But, um, you know, who's, who's the responsible, um, to say, hey, look, you got appointed? And, and if, if it's a board action, um, I can understand Corkham Cemetery District or whatever appointed board, ultimately, it's their responsibility for someone to know, hey, you got appointed. But, um, I don't even know the Corkham Cemetery District, you know, um, and I'm just using them for example. Like, if the manager there or their board would know that, um, these community members applied, were waiting to hear they got appointed, um, but they just give a letter, so I know we got plenty to do, but maybe while we have an intern working, maybe the, one of our interns could just, um, call that day off the application, there's gotta be a contact number, say, hey, listen, the board supervisor's appointed you this day, there'll be a letter going to Corkham Cemetery District, contact the manager. Um, and so it came across urgent yesterday, because Thursday morning is the board meeting for the Cemetery District, and then to learn those two board members weren't aware, they got appointed and were, and haven't been invited to come to the meeting yet on Thursday morning. So, um, I know, I know stuff happens, but I got a copy of the letter, thanks, council, you guys noted out quick. But maybe that's a process we need to look at as the board is voting on agenda items to appoint people, and then we think it's done. There might be a gap communication. Thank you. Okay. Then, uh, that takes us to, uh, winding our way to adjournment, board goes in a closed session, we have a number of items that's on the, uh, public agenda. We will adjourn until, uh, next Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023, 9:00 AM, right back here.